However, let's um with Memorial Day coming, let's uh stand and we'll have a moment of silence for all the veterans and the people who served for us, plus the tragedy that happened in Texas. Let's all keep those families and friends and all those people in our thoughts and prayers. So let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. I say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um the attendance, all the term PC members are present. Uh we need to approve of the agenda. We'll make a motion for the agenda.
Second.
Moving second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose a motion carries. Public comment, is there any public comment? State your name.
My name is Laura Ingle from the Little Douglas Township.
Three minutes please.
Much has been made of members of the various board and commissions in some of our townships having conflicts of interest because they have signed leases with Apex. Douglas Township's Paul Olson is one of two planning commission members who have had to recuse themselves from any discussions involving the wind issue. Other township officials face recall for what is perceived as bias in this matter. Personally, I find this to be a non-issue. Almost every township board member and/or planning commission member who has come under fire by those opposing renewable wind energy is self-employed. I can speak with some authority to this issue because I am married to a farmer now retired. He is also involved in his community and his church. Whenever Larry left farm work to attend a meeting, he left behind chores that needed doing that caused him to be active in his community. Most of the others who have been targeted for recusal or recall are in the same boat. They either leave their work undone or have to pay others to do it for them while they are serving their respective townships. Therefore, it is inaccurate to insist that their actions regarding wind are for the sole purpose of lining their pockets. The very fact that these folks are willing to spend years of their lives on boards and commissions for little pay or none at all while leaving work that may yield them a much higher return should tell us something. It should demonstrate to us that they are able to modify or set aside their personal needs and goals to accomplish the greater good for the community. The executive director of the Mount County Economic Alliance, who has publicly opposed the wind project, was asked how she reconciled this stance with her role as MEA director. She responded, and I quote, "My role and my job as the executive director for the alliance is to put all my personal and political affiliations aside and do what is best for the economic growth of our county." Was her explanation treated with skepticism? Contrast that with the case of Douglas Township's Paul Olson. He and his family have contributed to our community through several generations. Was Paul given a similar pass? Not on your life. He is treated with suspicion and accorded pariah status. Am I the only one who senses something unfair about this? Thank you.
Next. Wayne in back.
Robert Scott, Sidney Township, for the follow-up to what uh you just said. I want to make sure, I'm wondering if Tammy's aware that her father and brother have signed a wind lease with Apex or property they own in Belvedere Township. I'm not getting a reaction, so maybe she's not even aware of it. Well, they did sign a lease that was signed back in August and named on April 5th. It recorded last week, which is property on Belvedere. Well, um the issue there seems to me that, that even though it's not Douglas Township property, a wind project in Douglas is going to be beneficial to having a wind project in Belvedere. But I think this is an issue that Mr. Reddick should address and you folks should address and whether she has a conflict of interest and potential bias in favor of her brother and father. Now, obviously the lease system wants to look at them, but in either case, if you decide not to address this, or you conclude that she's not, uh should be recused because of this, then I think anything she says about the wind ordinance needs to be taken in light of the fact that it could potentially benefit her brother and her father. Second point, unrelated, last month, Mr. Reddick made a point saying that he was not involved, uh that he, when he, when the, the wind ordinance in Grand Haven was adopted, he was not on the board at the time of people accusing of being. The fact of the matter was, he was not on the board when the 2009 wind ordinance was adopted in Grand Haven, but in fact, he was chairman of the planning commission. So when he says he did not advise Township on this ordinance provision, that's just flat out dishonesty. And when you can't trust a township attorney, it's really hard to trust a township planning commission or its board. Thank you.
Next comment.
Keith Phelps, Douglas Township. My daughter has no idea what business I got, and you're a damn liar because I do not have a lease.
No more, hey, hey! You're done. You're done.
Keith!
Keith! You're done looking out. Out! Keith's out.
I get tired of being accused of that, but I do not have a lease. And the rest of you, I'm chairman of the committee. Mr. Murphy, I'll take care of business, okay? Or you can leave. You understand? Got it. Next comment. No more, right here.
Kelly Jefferson, Douglas Township. I just want to say thank you to all. I know this is a very busy and hectic week and weekend coming up, and I just want to thank you all for taking the time to do what needs to be done tonight. And just, everybody's got their own opinion, and I respect everybody's opinion. They're entitled to it. So whether or not I agree with it is a non-issue. I know you are all deciding to do what is best in your minds and in your hearts and your souls and whatever else people want to call it, for the community. And I respect the fact that you are sticking to your guns, no matter what you hear out here, and the fact that, you know, Mr. Baldwin, you and I can have a conversation. We may not agree on the situation in which we don't, and I don't agree on some of the stuff in which else goes on in the ordinances. But that's what was made. You know what? If you, you know, people have got to learn to just let other people's opinions be okay. You don't have to agree with them, you don't have to bash them. But I just want to say thank you all for taking your time out of this holiday weekend and week and graduation and school issues and sporting events and all that. So thank you.
Yep.
Rick Harris, Douglas Township, Clifford Lake. I want to talk about the, the likes and the setbacks for float planes. My comments might take an extra minute or two. Appreciate the indulgence.
Got three.
What I have to say is very, very important, it's a matter, could be a matter of life and death for a float plane pilot.
Three minutes.
Let me say the following. I'm a pilot, I'm not a float plane pilot. I've never been in a float plane. But I know a little bit about how, I watch them go up and down. I spent the last couple of days talking to five different, what I would call, people that are in the know or experts. I talked to two pilots who have float planes on Clifford Lake, which is now a, an official airport, seaport two-two charter. I talked to another fellow who has a float plane north of us who uses that facility. And I talked to a flight plane school in Traverse City, and I talked to a flight planes instructor school in Waterford, Michigan. And I asked them, what is your, what are the performance? Can you, what happens if you, if you come against a 500-foot wind, wind tower? And here's what I was told. By the way, before I even say that, the FAA may have application as, hopefully you guys have looked into this, since this was brought up last time. The FAA has a FAR, FAR 20, uh 77 dash point 23, which may apply to the situation. Mr. Reddick, maybe you've looked at that, I don't know. But it may not. I think this, the township needs to make and have a safe rule, whatever the FAA decides to do or not to do. It depends upon how they interpret a 2,000-foot runway in the context of a 5,000-foot lake. I don't know what the answer to that is, maybe you do. But it may apply and may not, is my opinion. Um I, I got this from the five different float plane pilots. Different planes, different pilots, different horsepower's and so forth. Basically, here's what they told me. They take off and they go at speed across the ground about si, between 60 and 70 miles per hour. They can climb, three of them told me they can climb at 300 feet, best rate climb on, on a, on a, on a worst-case scenario. Two told me 200 feet a minute. Worst-case scenario is actually pretty typical. It's you've got a passenger, you've got a full fuel tank, you've got a hot day and maybe even a humid day. That's when the plane climbs the, the least. That's when it suffers the, the greatest dep, uh degradation of, of performance. Full, heavy, hot, humid day. That's a summer, that's a very typical day uh around here. That's when those guys are flying. 60 miles an hour is one mile per minute. If, if we take a ride and we go one mile of, of that, of that takeoff, in one minute, how much have we increased? Two of those airplanes went up 200 feet, and three of the airplanes went up 300 feet. Against a five-foot, a foot tower, not enough. One mile is not enough. Let's go two miles. Two of those airplanes have gone 400 feet, three of those airplanes have gone nine, uh 600 feet. Not enough, not even close for a 500-foot tower. The FAA has a general rule of 500 feet obstacle clearance above the ground against a building or a tree or a mountain or a turbine. Not enough. Three miles, you've got two airplanes that've gotten 600 feet and three airplanes have gotten 900 feet. Still not enough. Four miles, the point is, the, these float plane pilots understand the characteristics of their plane. They will tell you if you ask them that, that two or three or four miles may not be enough. The FAA rule, if it applies, will be six notable miles, which is seven car statute miles. I'm just begging you to look at the, talk to the experts, find out what they have to say because it's a matter of life and death.
Time.
Thank you.
I was gracious enough to give you some extra time, Rick.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I didn't believe an airplane pilot couldn't fly around a tower. I've talked to, you know, people brought up, who are you? Who are you? Chris Johnson, Pine Township, Stone Road. I've talked to uh spray pilots, because that was, that was a big deal, a lot of spray pilots. They can fly around anything. I'm sure, you know, some planes they pick on up, they can turn a little bit or... And kind of, you know, what I want you to think about when you're, you're making the ordinance is that, you know, Apex has actually addressed some of the issues that have happened in other areas. One of the issues in the past has been whoever gets at the tower, they get all the money. So Apex says, well, they'd like to sign up. And then they, they spread the money out over more areas. Most people know that. So they addressed that issue. The other issue is, when you go up to Greshit and Isabella, sometimes you see a lot of towers. And it's flat over in Greshit, so you'll see more. So Apex addressed that by putting them taller, you can put fewer in. And it's kind of like, you know, I live out in the country and I can look out a window and I can see a few houses. And it looks nice, I got house, wood, woods, I mean, we got a cell phone tower. It looks nice, they were solid houses. Not that a house looks bad, but it was solid houses and it looks bad. So Apex tried to address that by putting them taller, you get fewer of them. The other thing, you have the, the wetland map here. 600 feet from a wetland, there's wetlands everywhere. And they tried to address this in Pine Township by saying, well, the wetland is where we got a pond and I have like, I only have, the original farm is about 340 acres and we have like six of those ponds on our farm. They're, they're everywhere. This is Michigan. I mean, it used to be all wetland, so. And I, I do wetlands for a living. I design wetlands, I do wetland restorations. I don't see any reason, I don't want you to build into wetland, because that would be bad. If that'd be low in landscape, they wouldn't want to do that anyway. But putting a wind tower close to a wetland really doesn't, I don't see where that would affect it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah, over here on the side.
Kristi Williams, Douglas Township. Um I visited somebody that already had signed with the company. Actually, they didn't sign their property when they bought it. Um was split up into three, so of course Apex owns it. Well, just so you know, this person signed Jackson's, if they're here, I don't know. Signed uh two years ago when nobody knew about the windmills. This person now owns the property. Apex wrote him a check. They did. Forty bucks for two years. That's beautiful. And they have no rights to their own property that they purchased because Jackson's signed before they split their property off. So congratulations to that, that's great. But I'm telling you, there's wetlands to consider, there's help to consider, and I am one of them that has to worry about it. And when you're talking about wetlands, Greshit County has not a single natural lake over there. That's why they tend to put all the turbines in. And all of them. We have so many natural waterlands around here. And taking off as a sprayer in a plane, that's totally different. They have a lake they have to land on and take off on, and they have to have a straightaway. So I understand this whole concept, but please, consider the hundreds of people in this township when you're writing this ordinance and sending it off because you're only carrying about 5%. And I'm telling you, I know of about 300 to 500 people that are against these windmills. So just think about it. And think about the health of the people that live in this township and the length that we have lived here. That's what should matter, not the money.
I just kind of have a follow-up. Um my Cindy Schick, 1351 West Briggs Road. Tammy asked a question or requested something that I requested a year ago, and that was to actually have someone come in and do sound demonstrations. And I wondered if you have pursued that before you get started. We do have someone in our community that actually worked for MCC specifically in sound. Even worked on what was once their wind turbine worker program that was stopped because there wouldn't be enough jobs to make it work MCC's while to run. And that was when Greshit was all going in. So that's one, is the sound. How many of you could listen to something and tell me if it was 40 decibels, 50 decibels, 60 decibels? And then when you talk ALMAX or an averaging, keep in mind, there were times we all loved it when the teacher averaged our grades, because if you got, missed a quiz and you got 100, at least you maybe got a 50, or if you got a 50 and 100. But when you're talking sound, that big boom hits you. And that's what I want you to think about, is have you really looked into sound? What if it hits 75? What if it hits 80? What if it hits 30? But when you're talking averaging, when it comes to sound, our ears don't average. Damage to ears are not done based on an average. So that's one thing I'd like you to consider. The other is, do you have your research prepared to file if you make any sort of motion on this ordinance? Because as part of the process, as a PC, you're to be able to put on record and store permanently all the research that was used to determine the details of your ordinance. And I would like to know what research you each personally have.
Uh Wayne in back.
Yeah, Eric Testor. You know, last meeting, you guys talked about removing the 2017 one. And we thought it happened, and then the lawyer said, no, you just removed it for part of that meeting or whatever. I didn't know if you were going to address removing the 2017 one tonight or not. But that ordinance, I think everybody knows is pretty bad. 1.25 from a property line, that's 500-foot turbines, 675-foot away from somebody's property. That's a dangerous ordinance that we should have got rid of long ago. And I wish you guys would look at that tonight and find a way to remove that if you could. Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on. We're going to start discussing the wind energy systems. Uh let's go ahead and...
Can I ask a question? Is the public comment over?
No one was back up, so we're moving on.
That's because you were looking down.
Okay, you're the last one.
I want to tell you why I've been here at many meetings for the last year and a half.
Could you just take your name?
I'm sorry. Hey Scott, Sidney Township, thank you. This is why I'm here. This is why most of the people, at least on this side of the room, are here. These are voices. These are people who have lived it. I'm not going to give you specifics because we've seen what happens to victims when pro-life people don't want to hear their voices. Carrie, I can't stress enough how much your world will change. It will never be about why we as humans, what we as humans can tolerate before harm is done. It should be about preserving the peace our homes already provide. Shelley, from Iowa. Have you ever experienced vertigo, nausea to the point of vomiting, excruciating ear pain and pressure, along with a constant headache and sleep deprivation? This is some of what I experienced living among industrial wind turbines. Don't tell me industrial wind turbines don't harm. How do I know it's the turbines? The symptoms cease when I leave for a period of time. It is devastating and debilitating. Working in the yard is near impossible. You are exhausted all the time. It is criminal to place these industrial wind turbines anywhere near humans. We are not sure if we can remain in our home of over 40 years. We are devastated. I hope everybody's listening because this is all of us here. Tanya, you don't and you won't understand it until you live it. The noise is beyond explanation. We truly thought we would be able to deal with it, we can't. It's a constant horrific unbearable noise. Where do you go at 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night, or 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning in your pajamas? With your pets? It's completely unacceptable that we find the need to flee our home. Charlie, my family and myself's lives have been completely devastated and turned upside down. They surround us. They keep us from sleeping at night and drive us crazy by day. They've ruined the equity in our farm that took us 15 hard years to create. They've ruined the markability of our farm. Not that we ever even considered selling or moving, now we have no choice. We just bought a house in town and will be reg, regrettably abandoning our precious home. These are the new homeless in our country. Hal, New York. If we knew what would happen... This is all of you at the table, the board. If we knew what would happen, never would we have signed a contract that puts our friends and neighbors through this.
Um thank you guys for getting a sound system. I very appreciate it. Mel's a band, Douglas Township, Pine Township. That's all around here. Thank you for the sound system. We have an issue here because we had a gentleman tell us to go screw ourselves or whatever he said, I didn't listen. Usually I'm the one saying that, but this time I was quiet. And we get called bullied and we get called nasty names, we get called yelled at. But we don't lie, you know? If one of us signed up for a lease, we go face-to-face with our neighbors and our friends and we say, hey, this is what we did. We were dumb, we were naive, we were gullible. We weren't thinking about our friends and our family and our relatives and our own health and our animals and our dogs or whatever. But people that put stuff in a courthouse and file a record do not lie either. So obviously, that's in front of you, and all of you guys should have a chance to look at it. Now we have another big conflict of interest. I'm not sure which one of that is, whose that is, yours or his, I mean, who's related?
Keith is my father.
Okay. So we have a big conflict of interest now, because most boards, if it's immediate family, father, we, we sort of bypass grandparents, brother, that's a conflict. There is no way now that you can be naive and innocent and be open-minded to your own thoughts because you have family members every night at your house, beep, 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 beep. We don't live with people at our house every night that are signed up. None of us do. They may be there. We're doing this because we genuinely, genuinely have an interest at heart. I'm teary-eyed tonight because I've been walking around the migraine for four days because I'm busting my ass for this township. And I've had surgery after surgery because I got hit by cars pedestrians. So any noises and sounds and stuff affects me. So you put a turbine in my backyard and my life will be fucking, excuse my French, hell. Okay? So I'm here fighting for my own life, my husband's life, my in-law's life, everybody that I can think of. I've lived downstream, I've, I've lived in Oakland County, I worked for Detroit Medical Center. I worked for, I went to dead body seats for a milk examiner. I've seen life at its worst and ugliness and terribleness and awfulness, and I just want some piece of water. And for two years, we have been going round and round and round and round. And you're interrupting my life and everybody else's life, and we've made fabulous, wonderful friends. And this township is amazing. I have people show up and clean my house, I have neighbors show up and help my husband with my chores. I have people show up so he can take me to the hospital. But it's going to end with a stupid, terrible, terrible stranger you let walk in this door and that is more important than us, Apex. And if we don't put something in safe, they're not going to be the next one. Then it's going to be DTE and then they're going to do substations. Then they're going to tell me my cow field has to be a substation because all the turbines are in the next county. You don't get it. This, we have one chance, people.
Time. Public comment's done, we're going to move on. Discussion of the ordinance.
I'd, I'd like to say something just before we get started on that. Four of us at this table were in a meeting Wednesday before our last meeting over at the college. It was a seminar on etiquette and how to conduct yourself as PC members, et cetera, et cetera. And by, um, they told, they told us a lot. We had, we had coverage on open meetings violation. We had, we had um instruction on recusing yourself and what to do about that. We had um, uh, let's see, open meetings, um, we had numerous things. Anyway, what I'm getting at is one, less than one week later, we had a meeting. And the next morning, and I didn't know about this right off the get-go, our chairman here left Todd Wells' message at 6:15 in the morning. And at 10:02, he texts Tammy and myself with his findings from Greenstone and said he'd talked to Terry about um Blue House and stuff. And then later that day, he texts Tammy and I again about being in contact with the owner of CAS or CSA.
CMS.
CMS over there. I just, I either want to be excluded from your string so I don't get caught up in this and get FOIA'd, which is what they were talking about, weren't they, Pat? Remember that conversation the guy had? These were attorneys. Now, at what point, that was four, four PC members that were involved in this that morning. Four. That's, that's a public meeting, basically. I mean, we can hold a public meeting.
They were separate text messages, Rick. How am I supposed to contact and be communicated?
That is what Mr. Reddick addressed eight months ago. One of the things he addressed, anyway. And those people, the, the attorneys at that meeting says, don't put anything in writing. Then I hear stuff about on Facebook and so, I'll never read on Facebook. I don't even know how to run a computer, so I'm not a threat to anybody.
And you, gets your point?
Well, my point is, is I don't feel the conduct that's going on outside of this is what a planning commission person should be. We're supposed to keep a low profile. They don't, they said, if we, if five people in a restaurant want to talk about it, tell them to come to a meeting. You don't, we're not supposed to engage. And here we are, the next morning, it was all engaged. Now, I'd like, I'd like Ron to address this. If those two other attorneys didn't know what they were talking about, that's fine. And while you're at it, um, figure out what was Tammy there, if that's a violation or not, or whatever. They told us what to do with recused people. They said, um, they can't sit at the table, and they said you can, in most instances, they have to leave the room. And then call them back in. The way we're conducting the meetings has got to be upright, or we're going to get in trouble, is what I'm saying. And I don't want to be FOIA'd anymore.
Ron, do you got any comments?
Yeah, if you'd like me to.
Your mic.
I keep coming on the particulars of what...
I can't comment on the particulars of what you're asking about, because it's a little dangerous to take a subset of facts and draw any conclusions, so I don't want to do that. But I, I will tell you, as a general principle, what you're describing is correct, that it is possible to have accidental public meetings if you engage in electronic communications with each other, deliberating on a matter of public policy via text, email, or other forms of electronic communication. That was not necessarily automatically an OMA violation, because if it's, if it's accidental and there's not an intent to violate, the courts have generally treated that as not a violation. But you raise a good point, that as a general practice, it is a good idea to avoid communications in electronic form that go out to a quorum of the planning commission or any public board, if you're talking about a matter of public policy, because it is possible to fall into an OMA violation when you do that. So your general theme of your comments is correct. On the FOIA front, yes, it's been recognized by more than a few courts that if you're using your personal devices, whether it's a computer or a cell phone, to engage in township business, that the records that are exchanged are public records that are obtainable through the Freedom of Information Act. So you're also generally correct on that point. The third point, on conflict of interest, some of the comments made tonight are, are not legally correct. Recusal is not required if you have somebody like a, a father, a brother, or something like that, that even would have a direct interest in the Apex project in the township. The courts have gone so far as to hold that even husband and wives are separate economic units, and therefore, unless they have a joint interest in the matter in question, that if a wife has a conflict and the husband does not, the husband who's on the board would not have to recuse himself, and vice versa, if it was the wife on the board and not the husband. So these concerns that have been raised about extended relatives and further removed of having projects in other municipalities are certainly not a basis for finding a conflict of interest that requires recuse. And I think the last point you touched upon was the procedure, is when somebody does recuse themselves, you are correct that the procedure is for that person to remove themselves from the table and to sit in the audience. It is not required that they leave the meeting space, and in fact, that would violate OMA itself, to throw them out of the meeting for that reason. So sitting in the audience when the matter in which the conflict is comes up is appropriate, and that's all that needs to be done. Did that cover?
I think, there was a lot of information given that night, I just found it, I found it quite informative, to tell you the truth.